With us for a moment as we end our closed session. Good evening, everyone. May I have a motion to return to open session and approve certificate of closed meeting, number eighteen dash nineteen dash seven for the closed session?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Palmer Roy. I may, I have a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Rine?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer Roy?
Yes.
Great. May I have a motion to approve our agenda this evening?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Holmes, second by Ms. Boyd. Are there any changes or discussions? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November five, 2018, regular school board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Holmes.
Second.
Second by Ms. Palmer Roy. Are there any changes or discussions? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay? Ayes have it unanimously. And now the favorite part of the agenda, recognitions. Word of the month.
Good evening. I'm Kirsty Valentic. I'm one of the early childhood special education teachers here at Walker Grant Center. The definition of communicators is that we express ourselves confidently and creatively in more than one language and in many ways. We collaborate effectively, listening carefully to the perspective of individuals and group. Early childhood special education consists of the youngest communicators in city schools. From the ages of two to four, we are learning what we will, what will be the best mode of communication for each child. By using varying, varying forms of communication such as verbal, gestural, visual, sign language, and assistant forms of communication, our scholars will succeed in being the best communicators they can be.
We're going to sing everybody a song. Are you ready, guys?
No.
No? Thank you, I appreciate that. Alright, we're going to do Twinkle Twinkle Little Star. Ready? Alright. Twinkle, twinkle, little star, how wonderful you are. Up above the world so high, like a diamond in the sky. Twinkle, twinkle, little star, how wonderful you are.
Okay.
Yay!
Oh.
She wants to take a picture of you.
Oh. Oh, yay!
Wait, wait, Kristen. We're going to take a picture.
Picture, picture.
We're going to take a picture. We're going to take a picture. Now they're warmed up. There you go.
This is so awesome.
Oh. Thank you. Very good. Awesome. Okay, Monroe singers, right?
Monroe singers.
And we will now invite our Monroe singers to come forward.
Well, Head Start certainly got us in the mood with that great rendition of Twinkle Twinkle Little Star. And so now, a moment we've been anxiously anticipating, our Monroe singers will usher in the winter holidays. Please welcome the James Monroe singers.
Aye. Yay!
Joy to the world, the Lord is come. Let every sinner king. Let every heart prepare in Rome. And let nature sing. And let heaven, heaven, nature sing. He rules the world with truth and grace, and makes the nations blue. The glories of his righteousness. And wonders of his love. And wonders of his love. And wonders of his love. Thank you, guys. We've got members of the Monroe singers, but there's also a few members of our Advanced Women's Choir. If you don't go ahead and raise your hands as well, we've got Martha and Toni and Bianca that are joining us from Advanced Women's. (Singing) I've got the bells, sings the bells, singing the same, the same way. Christmas is here, bringing cheer to the world, singing the same. Ding dong, ding dong, bells are ringing, all around. One seems to hear words of cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, I'm glad, raising myself, all around, telling tales of the tale. Maybe they bring wild people, sing songs of cheer. Christmas is here, singing the same. Ding dong, ding dong, bells are ringing, all around. One seems to hear words of cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, I'm glad, raising myself, all around, telling tales of the tale. Maybe they bring wild people, sing songs of cheer. Christmas is here, singing the same. Ding dong, ding dong, bells are ringing, all around. One seems to hear words of cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, I'm glad, raising myself, all around, telling tales of the tale. Maybe they bring wild people, sing songs of cheer. Christmas is here, singing the same. Ding dong, ding dong, bells are ringing, all around. One seems to hear words of cheer from everywhere filling the air. Oh, I'm glad, raising myself, all around, telling tales of the tale. Maybe they bring wild people, sing songs of cheer. Christmas is here, singing the same. Ding dong, ding dong, bells are ringing, all around. To every home. Ding dong, ding dong. (Singing) The Lord bless you and give you. The Lord lift his countenance upon you. And give you peace. And give you peace. The Lord make his face shine upon you. And be gracious. And be gracious. The Lord be gracious, gracious son to you. As always, a superb job.
That certainly is a tough show to follow, but an obvious reason why James Monroe High School has a Blue Ribbon program. Chairperson Kay, Dr. Melton, board members, families and guests, here tonight to recognize some individuals from Walker Grant Middle School. The first individual is an eighth grader, and I don't believe she's here this evening, but eighth grader Emily Mon was recognized recently by the Fredericksburg Lions Club for her winning entry into the local entrance to the Lions Club International Peace Poster Contest. Emily is a daughter of Mr. Thomas Mon and Mrs. Donna Mon, and she is a wonderful young artist. Our next individuals are our James Farmer Scholars. Each year, seventh grade students are selected for participation in the James Farmer Scholar Program at the University of Mary Washington on the basis of academic potential, test scores, recommendations, and written essays. The program provides academic enrichment, tutoring, extracurricular activities, and preparation for college under the guidance of sponsor, Mrs. Demetra Silver. Ms. Silver will introduce the students recently inducted into the program.
Good evening. Bryce Caldwell, son of Ms. Melissa Caldwell. Demara Bell, daughter of Mr. Ma- Masara, I'm sorry, Bell, and Ms. Teresa Ruby. Olivia Byrd, daughter of Mr. Ent- Entree Byrd and Mrs. Danielle Byrd. Destiny Scruggs, daughter of Mr. Deonte Scruggs and Mrs. Amber Scruggs.
Nicholas Fauntleroy, son of Mrs. Latoya Ross and Mr. LeVar Fauntleroy.
Timothy Ford, son of Ms. Demetria Holmes. Kayla Gulaj, daughter of Mr. Jonathan Henderson and Mrs. Kelly Henderson. Olivia Byrd, daughter of Mr. Ent- Entree Byrd and Mrs. Danielle Byrd. Destiny Scruggs, daughter of Mr. Deonte Scruggs and Mrs. Amber Scruggs. Timothy Ford, son of Ms. Demetria Holmes. Isaac Robinson, son of Mr. Isaac Robinson and Mrs. Judy Robinson. Donovan Frost, son of Mr. Robert Frost and Ms. Amanda Bailey. Donovan Frost, son of Mr. Robert Frost and Ms. Amanda Bailey. And Romel Turner Jr., son of Tamara Robinson and Romel Turner Sr. And we will make sure he gets his certificate at school tomorrow. Thank you.
The faculty members are asked to nominate a member of the senior class for recognition as the Optimist Club Student of the Month. The purpose of the award is to recognize students for their efforts in art, athletics, academics, and community service work. I am pleased to recognize the following senior who was selected for the month of November. Jonathan Washington, son of Mr. Gregory Washington Sr. Please welcome Jonathan.
Next, I'd like to recognize our fall sports championship teams. The JM Cross Country team members are really close friends, and they had fun while excelling at the tough sport of cross country. Their work started in June as they built mileage and progressed to hills, speed work, and racing. Before the regional meet, both teams were ranked third, but both teams came out as Region Three B champions. At the VHSL State Championship Meet, both teams put forth their best effort. The girls finished sixth out of forty-eight teams, and the boys finished fourth out of forty-eight teams. The following three cross country runners were captains of the boys' Region Three B Cross Country Championship Team. William Sneed, son of Mr. George Sneed and Mrs. Kristin, Kirsten Sneed, excuse me. William? Mitch Dolby, son of Mr. Andrew Dolby and Mrs. Michelle Dolby. And Alex Kolar, son of Mr. David Kolar and Mrs. Christine McBride. The following two cross country runners were captains of the girls' Region Three B Cross Country Championship Team. Haley Casperson, daughter of Mr. Matthew Casperson and Mrs. Stephanie Casperson. And Eva Kerr, daughter of Mr. Christopher Kerr and Mrs. Beatrice Kerr. The following two cross country runners were captains of the JV girls' Battlefield District Cross Country Championship Team. Emma Chapman, daughter of Mrs. Christie Hadley and Mr. Gabriel Chapman. Is Emma here? McLaren Reed, daughter of Mr. Christopher Reed and Mrs. Lauren Reed. The JV field hockey team had an undefeated twelve-and-o season. Every player made an impact while also playing as a team to win each game. Our goalie ended the season with nine shutouts and allowed one goal in each of the other three games. The following girls were captains of the JV field hockey Battlefield District Championship Team. Grace Maynard, daughter of Mr. Mark Maynard and Mrs. Christie Maynard. Sarah Regal, daughter of Mr. Ricardo Regal and Mrs. Sarah Regal. The varsity field hockey team was under a lot of pressure to repeat as state champions this year. The team worked extremely hard and were determined to return to the state tournament. We are excited and proud to win back-to-back state championships. The following players were captains of the varsity field hockey state championship team this year. Caroline Whack, daughter of Mr. John Whack and Mrs. Penny Whack. Morgan Regal, daughter of Mr. Ricardo Regal and Mrs. Sarah Regal. And Mary McDaniel, daughter of Mr. Richmond McDaniel and Mrs. Rene McDaniel.
Can we have all of JV and varsity field hockey girls up here?
And coaches.
Ready? We could photobomb.
That's right.
I still can't.
Last but not least.
Congratulations.
Okay, do we have any citizens wishing to address the board this evening? Okay. Seeing none, I'll move on to our consent agenda. May I have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as presented with the following items. One, the Head Start approvals, and two, our annual lease agreement Boys and Girls Club, which was revised as of December third, 2018. The document was revised slightly to reflect the corrections with the name and address of the current facility, as well as some areas to be used.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, and second by Ms. Palmer Roy. Is there any discussion at all about the consent agenda?
I just wanted to make an observation. This has nothing to do with the Head Start meeting, with the lease itself, but we are continuing to lease that building, and we've had some discussion about the condition of that building.
Yep.
And so I don't want that to fall off the bat.
Thank you, Reverend Bailey, for your comment. I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Next, we have action items, personnel.
I recommend the board approve the personnel schedules as presented.
Anyone going to move to approve?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Holmes, second by Ms. Boyd. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Rine?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer Roy?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next, we have 2018-2019 supplemental appropriations revisions.
I recommend the school board- I recommend the school board approve the Virginia Department of Education additional closeout and carryover grant awards to Fredericksburg City Public Schools in the amount of $232,609.9 and request that the Fredericksburg City Council complete the supplemental appropriation process.
Moved by Reverend Bailey.
Second.
Second by Ms. Palmer Roy. Any comments or discussion? Having none, I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Next, we have the appropriation of prior year end general operating fund balance.
Recommend that the school board formally appropriate a portion, $999,000, of the preliminary unassigned post-audit estimated GOF balance amount of $1,680,383 from the fiscal year 2018 GOF balance, reserving and designated its use as stated in fiscal year 2019. And wish to formally appropriate the preliminary amount of $324,000 from fiscal year 2018 SRF balance, reserving and designated its use as stated. And further, I recommend the school board approach City Council for formal appropriation authority, amending the fiscal year 2019 GOF and SRF budgets.
Yes, you've heard the recommendation by the superintendent. Is there a motion?
Still moved. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Boyd and second by Ms. Holmes. So I will lead the discussion. You know, when I looked at the amount, and I probably should have called earlier, but for an amount this size, it's almost like I need a budget presentation or I need more detailed explanation in order for me to feel fiscally responsible of how you arrived at how we are using the fund balance. And that's just how I feel because it is a significant amount. And, you know, I do, I am concerned, but if the board is willing to move forward with the vote, we can do that. I just, you know, it's the fiscal piece of me that feels that we should see more with the dollar amount of this. It's significant. And we may have had significant ones before, but this is, I paid close attention tonight. So I saw it and I said, ah, I probably would have wanted more discussion around how we determine what to do with it. What's the process? Do we get the input from all staff? Is it you, Mr. Baker, you, Dr. Melton? What goes into the makeup of this is what I'm recommending? So that I'm comfortable that, you know, it's communicated and everyone feels that these are the items that we need to spend the funds on.
Mr. Baker?
And that's, you know, this is what we spent previous year, plus or minus what our expenses are for the two recent schedules. So without going into more detail exactly what program we need to pay for, four hundred and fifty dollars, we're pretty well laid out now in the description slot line. The only one that we could expand upon easily, you can get into the details of the admin program set, these are specific costs or needs items, where you can get into another line item, like technology group, you can tell you what's requested or what's additional to unpack. If we can do that in the future, it truly makes up prior experience of other spectacles areas of policy.
And I hear you, I guess from a budget perspective, you know, because I'm usually complaining that our budgets tend to be more just getting by, where's the program content sometimes? But it looks as though we try to supplement based on what we have left to go into the next year, which I am accustomed to. It's just that when the amount is significant, I just would appreciate more of how we arrived at this. And I don't know if you feel this way, but for me...
I actually called Mr. Baker earlier today.
Thank you.
About this one and the previous supplemental, whatever the other one was, because it wasn't a lot of information. So I was going to ask, you know, if we could get more information just about what those numbers mean and where it is going. But I did call about that.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Any other concern or comments? I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Moving forward, the next action item is revision to the 2018-19 school calendar.
Just a bit of background before my recommendation. Depending on what happens with next year's calendar, we could possibly have a very short summer. We're asking teachers to do a lot of curriculum work in the summer. So we have four early dismissal days during the year, but it has been requested for a fifth early dismissal day, which we've had in the past in May, so that teachers may have time to spend on curriculum alignment with the SOL. Understand that there are quite a few major revisions coming in the coming year, especially in the area of math, and our teachers need some time to work on those. So that's the reason for asking for the additional day, which would be, I believe, May 10th. That's the background. Therefore, I recommend the school board approve a revision to the 2018-19 school calendar to add a day to staff development early dismissal of students in grades pre-K-12 on Friday, May 10th, 2019.
That's to Boyd's pleasure. Do I have a motion?
Still moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Palmer Roy, to change the calendar for a dismissal of students in grades pre-K through 12, Friday, May 10th. Any discussions, comments?
If the teachers see it, it sounds good.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Ayes have it. The next action item is adoption of legislative priorities. May I have a recommendation?
I'm going to recommend that the school board adopt the attached list of legislative priorities for 2018-19, and also I think it would be appropriate for Ms. Holmes to hit the highlights of those legislative priorities.
So most of our legislative priorities followed the Virginia Association of Superintendents priorities. I also looked at Spotsy's legislative priorities and then incorporated some Virginia School Board Association priorities that seem to pertain more to us. The highlights are funding and, funding and there's also some funding that we need funding for, you know, don't give us mandates if you're not going to fund them, obviously, but also funding for some of the testing that we do, especially for English learners, also giving us more to compensate for the at-risk add-ons. They're well below the national average, so we're asking that they bump those up. We also have some priorities to address the shortage of qualified teachers, so to make some funding to help with teacher retention, for enhanced mentoring programs for new teachers, and salaries, and let's see, some of the other ones. We have some student discipline priorities, and one of those is that principals, we're asking that principals not have to report to local law enforcement any misdemeanor, those kinds of things. Student safety, so that we have increased counseling and behavioral assistance for students, as well as adapting school buildings for safety. Unified statewide system of preschool services, if the preschool, the pre-K is part of a school system, that the school system be that governing body. And some dual enrollment, and the last one I thought was, this was on the vast one, the closure of schools due to a government action. If the government closes our schools for some reason, that those days don't count against us without us having to ask for a waiver. It seemed kind of commonsensical, but it's on there. So they are, I believe they'll be on our website. We all have a copy, and if anybody wants to know what our legislative priorities, please see me. You can have a hard copy or see it on the website.
We'll see that they are sent to each of our legislators.
And we'll also bring them with us when we go lobby.
Do I have a motion?
Still moved. Second.
So it's been moved by Ms. Boyd and second by Ms. Reen to adopt the legislative priorities for 2018 through 2019. Any discussion or comments?
I just wanted to say one other thing, that City Council also asked us for a copy of our legislative priorities so that they could also look at adopting them, you know, as a city council, which I thought was really, shows a really nice cooperation.
We'll forward those to City Council tomorrow.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. The next item is the update on possible pre-Labor Day opening.
I'm sure everyone is aware by now that due to the wording in the statute and the code, Fredericksburg does not qualify for a pre-Labor Day start. If you read the article in the paper, which I think explained the situation, and I think you all are already aware of it, our recommendation is that we contact Mr. Thomas's office tomorrow because he has already drafted legislation and needs a formal vote by the school board so that he may introduce that legislation. If you take that vote tonight, then we will call his office in the morning. They're expecting a call from us so they may introduce the legislation to have the language changed. The language pretty much excludes Fredericksburg while there are many cities across the state who are able to begin school prior to Labor Day because they're located in the middle of a county and it's a single school division. So again, to clarify, I recommend that the school board approve, request to, or Mr. Thomas, to introduce legislation rewarding that statute.
Does the statute say single or says?
It says A, and the new wording would say, what, Mr. Russ, Dr. Russ?
One or more.
One or more. We've also gotten calls from other superintendents, as well as City Council voicing support for us to move forward. I've had a number of superintendents call me and say, look, what can we do to help? It's ridiculous.
So, do you need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll move that we contact Delegate Thomas and ask him to move forward.
Second.
The move by Ms. Holmes and second by Ms. Boyd for Mr. Thomas to be contacted so that he can submit legislation to change the wording. Any discussion or comments? Okay. I call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I say nay, so ayes have it. We now come to our information items, and the first item is the instructional presentation for an update on Fredericksburg City Public Schools' student achievement. Ms. Brighty and Ms. Walsh.
Good evening. Tonight, there are three topics that Mrs. Walsh and I would like to briefly touch upon for you. The first is an overview of the new accreditation requirements. There's some confusion with educators across the state, with parents, and so I just, we feel like it's important that we try to clarify things as they come up, so we'll touch briefly on that tonight. We are going to list the strategic steps that we've already taken in response to that new requirement. And finally, we're going to let you know how we plan to support your school board goals moving forward. First, the accreditation overview, but I have to give the caveat that this is as a VDOE guidance at this moment. There was a webinar last week that changed things even more, so things are changing frequently and we're getting clarification, and as that happens, we do our best to keep you all informed. A detailed explanation and handouts were shared in October with attendees at the Joint City Council and FCPS collaboration meeting. However, if you have specific questions about the accreditation process at any point, please feel free to reach out. I could talk about it forever, so I won't get in the weeds tonight for you because nobody deserves that. Under the new system, however, there are three broad areas that schools are held accountable for. Those are achievement in English, Math, and Science, achievement gaps in English and Math, and then student engagement, and they consider student engagement to be absenteeism, graduation rate, dropout rates. Then with, under those three broad categories, there are subcategories, which you know previously as subgroups. So just to help you figure the, how the two are connecting, what we used to call subgroups are now subcategories, and they contribute to the overall indicators. So for us, the best way that we could think of to explain this to you is if you consider when you're making pancakes, not that I've ever made pancakes in my life, but if you did, I think you need some flour and water and something else, I don't know. Oil. Thank you, oil. And so if you think of the subgroups as the dry and wet ingredients, and then as the end result, or the pancake, as the actual indicator that we are held accountable for, that's the way that you can start thinking of subgroups, because in the past, we've spent a lot of time talking about individual subgroups, and now they're very important, but they roll up to a bigger one now, and that's a new piece for us. All schools are currently accredited. Hugh Mercer, Lafayette, and James Monroe only need a local improvement plan. Walker Grant is going through academic review process, and Mrs. Walsh, Mrs. Keels, and myself will receive training on that this week, and we will let you know what we find out. The biggest thing is that when you look at accreditation ratings and you see that there are three categories of accreditation ratings, accredited, accredited with conditions, and accredited denied. It's really important, I keep hearing people saying, are we going to lose accreditation? And the thing that I want to stress to you all tonight is that in order for accreditation to be denied, we would have to refuse to implement the steps that the DOE would want us to implement for improvement. They call those corrective actions, and I can't think of a scenario where Fredericksburg City Public Schools would ever choose to do something in defiance of the VDOE. So I highly doubt that we would ever get to that point. So just keep that in mind, that it's not a matter of losing accreditation the way that it was in the past when people come in and talk about taking over your schools and all of that. That was the old system, and that's not the new system. So hopefully that helps. And now Mrs. Walsh is going to take over.
Thank you. So throughout our yearly comprehensive planning, new goals were written for the 2018-2023 plan, focusing on the whole child, aligned with our vision and mission of the division, and updated outcomes based on the data. Aligned with the comprehensive plan's goal number one, student achievement, FCPS has focused its efforts on these four priority areas throughout the division, so English, Math, dropout rate, and graduation rate. So the FCPS response, highlighting our detailed response starting in summer with the administrative retreat, our focus was on dedicated work time for the comprehensive plan, school improvement plans, collaboration, team building, and vertical articulation. From there, the accreditation data was then used to narrow our focus on those priority areas, streamlining our... areas, streamlining our explicit efforts on achievement gaps. Central Office Strategic Planning meetings were held for two days in August. These led us into restructuring our central office instructional meetings for the 2018-19 school year with a concentration on the data trends specific to each school, which I'll discuss in detail on the next slide. Finally, as a division, we are adopting a growth mindset in response to accreditation. As a division, we're moving forward in our desire to learn and teach, embrace our challenges, understand that effort is a pass, path to mastery, accept criticism and feedback, find lessons and inspiration in success of others, and learn from our mistakes. And so I'll move into our fall response. One of the big things that we did here in fall, coming out of our strategic planning meetings in August, is that we started a school audit. So all of our instructional team members went from school to school auditing our accreditation status, and there was a lot of things that came out of those meetings. Through our restructured central office instructional meetings, our focus this year is on progress. Once we did the audit, we defined the expansion of the building liaison role. We outlined the requirement of sister school contacts by each building, and we're monitoring data trends on priority areas. The what are the priority areas, how are we going to monitor them, and then when? So we've held nine meetings to date. Those monthly meetings always follow our directors' meetings. The building liaisons, we have new building liaisons this year. Hugh Mercer is Ms. Lori Brighty. Lafayette is Dr. Marcy Catlett. Walker Grant has Dr. Russ. James Monroe has Dr. Thomas. And then there's two floating liaisons for the buildings, and that is myself and Ms. Kefir. And so we go from any building that needs us. This role has been expanded. Our three main areas of focus are instruction, progress, and then coaching and mentoring the administrative teams. Through the auditing process, there was a need for case managers that came out of that process to help the dropout prevention. So those have since been created, and along with an evening GED program that's targeting our L population. We've also been assigning family engagement coordinators to assist in community outreach. That's begun, and it was also a direct result of the conversations that were held during our school auditing and the needs that were expressed. Aligned with our growth mindset, each school has been tasked with investigating a sister school, one that has similar demographics and has success. The principles are to meet with those principals at those schools that they've chosen, do site visits, and then report back the successes that those sister schools are having in hopes of maybe sharing and implementing those strategies that are working in those sister schools. So that's another new initiative that we've been kind of focused on this year. Our training is aligning with the profile of a graduate in critical thinking in the classroom and inquiry teaching. We are focused on our community outreach, Title IX training, ACEs training, and then our connections with University of Mary Washington in Germana, trying to get more English language learner support. So our future plans. We have monthly school-level monitoring of data points that are going on in every location across the division, and those are being reported out to all of the building liaisons on a monthly basis. And they're to be posting their progress throughout the buildings in, in their choosing. We also have a shared collective effort, and that includes all of the stakeholders at the division level, the school board level, the city council level, and our community. This is a collective effort of getting us to progress forward. In the past, we've used critical thinking as a means to assess certain curricular standards. Critical thinking was not taught or assessed, but the focus was on teaching and assessing standards. Now we're moving to assessing critical thinking through standards and across curriculums. Our expectations align with the profile of a graduate because students will be able to apply and see connections to their learning across subject areas. And so this is a possible impact to our curriculum moving forward. And it's a big cultural shift in your mind to have to go from critical thinking being something that you assess to now seeing critical thinking as a means of, you know, we want students to acquire that, not just be an end goal to an assessment. And so we also want to make sure that along the way, we are celebrating successes. Dr. Melton has been encouraging all of our building administrators to stop along the way throughout this process and celebrate any small success that we can show through data trends in every building.
Ms. Walsh, can you talk some about the partnerships for dropout prevention?
Sure. So dropout prevention, Dr. Thomas has been working strategically. He has linked up with University of Mary Washington and Germana to provide programs and support for our English language learners, which is the population that we have seen that are in need of dropout, dropout prevention in the, in the majority of students that are affected. He's also created, along with all of the team that is working tirelessly on that, a JM Stars program, which is an after-school GED program that meets, I believe, twice a week from six to eight. And they're targeting English learners primarily to attend that so that we can catch them at a time that works best for them. Did I miss anything there?
I don't know.
Yeah. Harry, is there anything else that you can add?
Not unless you all have any questions about that approach at all, or any more details. Any more details or questions you might?
Are they students from UMW who are coming over? Like, or is?
Well, for the, so with this dropout program, we are essentially offering a GED program in the evenings. Many of these kids have indicated that they're at risk of dropping out because they need to work. And so we're doing this sixty-eight, Tuesday, Thursday program, but we have identified former Ls at Germana and at Mary Washington. As a matter of fact, with the help of Dr. Pano, to mentor these kids, to show them that they were once Ls and had difficulty in school, but now they have transitioned to higher education and to encourage them to, to continue forward with their education.
Great. Great. Anything else?
I was, I was kind of curious as to like, where we would find sister schools that would mimic Hugh Mercer or Lafayette, because those are kind of unique.
So I was a part of that process for both of those schools. We were not able to locate a K-2, 3, 5 school. They just don't exist with our demographics. But, but what I am pleased to say is that we did identify a lot of K-5 schools that the population is very similar with high achievement, and Mr. Terry and Mrs. Tankersley have actually visited those together, at least one of them. Swansque, Swans Creek in Prince William County. And, and we've worked with them before and have been really pleased with the support that they've been able to offer us. And so the collaboration between the two schools, being, visiting K-5 schools has been helpful. That's cool. And so then, the only other thing that we want to let you know about are the possibility of some topics for future board updates. And based upon your goals, we know that, that we will continue throughout the year to give you updates on English and math, the dropout rate and the graduation rate, of course. But we also want to be able to update you on communication to our stakeholders as well as community engagement to assist you all in reaching your goals throughout the school year as well. And if you have any other questions, we will take them at this time.
What we intend to do is to inform you, as well as the public, step by step, and expand on these areas that we just kind of gave you a brief overview of tonight, because we haven't figured it all out yet. There, there's more to come. We actually had a meeting today. I met with the liaisons today, and a lot of the talk was about data and producing data and producing and monitoring those areas where we're trying to improve. So we'll flesh it out a little bit more every month for you.
Okay. Great.
Sounds like you got a great start.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the monthly financial report.
What you have before you is the activity through October 31st of this year, and we have a large positive variance on the expenditures began. It's early in the year. That should trickle down as we progress. I, I don't have any unusual activity to, to bring to your attention. I will say that the cut-over date to the new accounting package and the account code structure is January the 7th for the first check run for accounts payable. So we're in the process of tracking all of our prior year activity and then the current year activity into the new account code structure, and we, we feel pretty good about that. I can't promise at this point, but it's very possible that you'll see the next monthly financial report in that format. And so what we, we've done with the staff during training and instruction is we have a, a lot, very large worksheet book, a workbook in Excel, and it has the old account number beside the new account number. And so that's been a, a big undertaking for the last two months, actually, to, to tag all those accounts across. And so this presentation will probably change by then because we'll be on a new horse, and I hope you like it. It's, I've had a, a brief meeting with the Assistant City Manager last week, and he was pretty happy about the, the possibility of having information displayed in a, in a call center format, and that's what I want to use for this report. I told you before that I'd like it to be as seamless as possible for you, me, and all the staff when we're looking at all these different reports for the system.
Great.
So that's, that's kind of where we're headed at the next school board meeting. Do you have any specific questions about any numbers or anything?
You covered the one I had. It was about the variance, five percent. Thanks.
Or to the new format?
Yep. Okay.
And please, please remember, if you have the time, please come and visit me because it's, it's really good to do one-on-one to show you, show you what it looks like.
I know.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Next, we have the FY 2020 budget calendar.
The calendar before you is in the same format as in prior years. As you know, there are really three budgets that are presented. We'll get something in late December, probably about an hour and a half before we leave for holiday from the governor's office, so we won't have time to do any calculations before we leave. And then during the process, we're going to have the House version and the, and the, the Senate version, and then they'll come to a conference committee and try to iron that out. I, I don't know if you've kept up, but there are a lot of scenarios as far as potential additional funding. Please keep in mind when you read those that we pay for about seventy percent of our costs locally and only get funding for about thirty percent of the cost. So if you see a big pay increase, we have to come up with our portion of it from the local economy. And also, please keep in mind that the last two times there was an increase proposed by the governor, it was in January or February, so we would have to change salaries during the middle of the year or towards the end of the year. If you try to cover it from the beginning of the year, then you have to cover more than seventy percent. So it, it could potentially be a, a large number. So while we're, while we're very hopeful, we're also very pragmatic about everything we read and, and try to keep everybody tied to reality when they see those numbers. Are there any questions or suggestions for the calendar?
No.
Okay. I appreciate you just keeping, like, having all the different scenarios in place. I don't, I don't keep up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is information item, compensation structure for teachers who exceed standard student class size.
I think the board is aware of the situation that we have this year with fourteen teachers who exceed the number of students in their class. And the, the charts you see and the explanation, I think, speak for themselves. If you have any questions, Dr. Russ has really spearheaded our efforts in this area. But we will bring it back to you for formal approval at our January meeting so we can issue the contracts to those, the supplemental contracts to those teachers and get it into payroll.
Okay. Any comments? Okay. Next is information item is school calendar drafts for 2019-2020.
So as, as you know, we've presented two calendars, one for a pre-labor, pre-Labor Day start, one for a post-Labor Day start. The drafts are included in your packet this time. I'll answer any questions you have about those. The only, the biggest difference of the two calendars are the times for spring break. Other holidays are around the same timeframe. The big issue is the semesters. If we do a pre-Labor Day start, the semester will end prior to the winter break. Post-Labor Day start will be similar to this year, probably near the end of January, first, first day or two of February. The post-Labor Day calendar is very similar to the calendar we're operating with this school year.
When would, you would want us to make a decision when?
I don't know. It's a good question, and I'm not sure we know the answer to that question.
Yeah, I just think it's a little inconsiderate for parents to have to plan their summer vacations at the last minute. I mean, I hear, you know, where they have time shares, they are accustomed to basically knowing what they're going to do with their jobs and vacation times, and the sooner a decision is made, the better. I don't, you know, I think the board has made a decision about supporting a pre-Labor Day start, but maybe it's next year instead of this year, if in fact we're waiting and, you know, parents can't do, you know, they're in limbo. I just, I just feel for them as they're planning their summer.
We're not asking for approval of that tonight.
Right, I was just asking when.
We've had those discussions, and I think we're in a hundred percent agreement with you that if, if we don't get word from the legislature until March, then we would not recommend moving forward with a pre-Labor Day start for next year.
That helps. Thank you. Okay.
But in the meantime, we want to be prepared with.
I understand that, yeah. Okay.
Do we have any indication of what the process might be if that legislation changes?
Delegate Thomas will introduce it, and it'll go through the House, and then, just like they do, there'll be, it'll be a crossover and...
It's going to be along with the normal cycle?
Yeah, but this is a short session this year.
Thirty days.
Yeah. It's a short session.
And we would know by the end of February, he told me.
Yes. Hopefully.
I mean, one way or the other, if it approved.
Yeah.
If that changed or not.
Yeah, we can push it. We can always push it back.
Okay. I'm assuming that the pre-Labor Day start calendar has the spring break the same time as the surrounding counties as well?
I don't believe both of those, both of our surrounding counties are the same, so we're matched up with Spotsylvania, I believe.
Spots, isn't Spotsylvania going with a March spring break and then a day or two at, at Easter?
Good Friday.
Yeah.
That surrounds Good Friday.
So Easter's late, and so what they've decided to do is have a spring break, more like a college spring break in March, and then come back with a one day, like Good Friday, or I think it's Good Friday, that they're, they're taking off at Easter.
Okay, so which spring break is best for Fredericksburg?
Probably to mirror Spotsylvania.
I mean, we talk about the counties. I want to hear what Fredericksburg is, what's best for Fredericksburg.
Well, I think it's about, I mean, if you're going from the second semester starting right after the holiday break and not have spring break until Easter, which is way in April.
Right.
And you're three or four weeks away from getting out of school.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense to me. It would make no sense to me that you have a spring break maybe aligned with Spotsylvania or with Mary Washington, you know, whenever they bowl in. So that's, we're still working through that.
Okay. Thank you.
And the pre-Labor Day start, our spring break is right on the heels of the end of a quarter, so the end of a term. So we end on a Thursday, a workday on a Friday, and then spring break. And this, it works out the same way for the winter break as well. The, the term ends on a Thursday, a workday on a Friday, and then we have two weeks for winter break. But that's only in the pre-Labor Day start.
Okay, great. All right. I want to remind the board that at the meeting... that at the meeting in November, we were invited to attend the annual joint legislative reception to be hosted by the Spotsylvania County School Board. The event had been planned for December the 6th. Following the meeting, we were notified that several legislators had other commitments on December 6th, and the reception was moved to December the 3rd. And because we are here, we informed Spotsylvania School Board that our members, that we would not be able to attend. Under new business, let's see. The board will hold a work session on Tuesday, January 15th, 2019, to discuss planning for the 2019-20 school board budget. The work session will be held at Walker Grant Center, beginning at 5:00. I want to remind the board that we will have our next regular meeting on Tuesday, January 15th, instead of Monday. The meeting will be held here, with closed session beginning at 6:30. The VSBA Capitol Conference will be held in Richmond on January 14th and 15th. The conference begins on Monday, January 14th, at 1:00 p.m. Personal visits with legislators will take place on Tuesday, January 15th. And please let Ms. Wright know if you wish to attend. So does that mean that you can't stay and you have to come back for the school board meeting?
The school board meeting's on the next day.
Conference ends Tuesday.
Oh, but it says here, personal visits with legislators will take place on Tuesday.
In the morning.
Those are in the morning.
We usually, we'll wrap up. Like, the latest I think we've ever had a meeting was like 2:30. So we can still get back for, it'll be, it might be tight. We'll just see.
Okay, all right. The VSBA orientation for school board chairs/vice chairs and new board members and superintendents will be held in Richmond on January 15th. There's a lot going on on January 15th. Does anyone wish to attend either of these conferences? But if we're having our school board meeting on January 15th, how are you... And where are they?
In Richmond.
Richmond.
Okay.
If you go to those, you don't go to the...
Okay, that's great. Okay. Okay, for the good of the order, I will start by letting staff know. We recognize the hard work that you've done thus far. It's in your faces. And we want you to know that we are very happy to be working with you. We appreciate all that you do, and it's a lot, and we really do appreciate it. Happy holidays. Get some rest, take some time out, and really decompress, and come back so that we can be together again as a team in 2019. And thank you.
Today's Hanukkah. Happy Hanukkah.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay.
Happy holidays.
Oh, yeah, tomorrow is Jennifer's birthday.
Happy birthday, Ms. Boyd.
She gets to attend the budget meeting.
I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
It's a move.
Oh, second. Okay, who moved and who's second? Homewood moved, Ms. Breen moved, and who's second? Ms. Holmes. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.